One Nation Under God, In The Movement, For Liberty And Justice For All.
Role?
Alderman Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
James Fred Swa.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Massey.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
All present.
Correspondence.
Cutting the street.
For the good of the city, anyone like to address the council? Anyone online?
I'm not sure we're on, I'm not sure we're online.
We, we are. She said the broadcast started already.
Well, they know we're not on, there you go.
I know, I forgot. Now we are, you might ask again.
Okay, thank you. No one live? Remarks to the mayor.
Good evening. You notice we were in green tonight for St. Patrick's Day. Happy St. Patrick's Day for everyone, or to everyone. First slide I'd like to address is the recent news with the passage of the American Recovery Act. And the, what it means to the city of Middletown. And the impact on our community. And basically, a lot of communities, or most communities throughout the country. As you know, if you've read, Middletown will be receiving about 12 million dollars of the funding. There are restrictions and guidelines on it. I believe I emailed you folks a report that's prepared by an accounting firm. Not our accounting firm, but, but from what I've been able to gather. The money has to be spent by December 31st, 2024. You can use it for making up lost revenues, expenses related to COVID. Certain capital improvements, certain infrastructure improvements. We're trying to get more definitive guidelines from them. But it is not an account that can be just monies. That will be just spent any which way that we want. Or cannot be used to just reduce taxes or things of that nature. So, so there are guidelines on it. We'll be able to make specific recommendations to the council on how we will spend it. As you know, we do have a lot of infrastructure work ongoing. That is bonded and as we continue with water and sewer main repairs. We'll certainly evaluate that as one of the, one of the main options of the, of the American Recovery Act. Keep in mind that we try not to be partisan here, but this passed with zero Republican support. Although it was well received locally by Republican leaders in New York State. Including the county executives and many of the assembly members and local elected officials. So, it was a bipartisan act that passed in that sense. With, with strong support in the American public. And I wanted to thank President Biden, Senator Schumer's, Schumer and Gillibrand. And our congressman, Congressman Patrick, Sean Patrick Maloney for the hard work they did. One point and questions that have been raised is. Why does Newburgh, Poughkeepsie and Kingston get so much more money than Middletown? And, you know, that's normally true on the community development program. Those cities do get more money from us on a annual basis. And there is a formula that, that is put in place. And it appears that this recovery act used all or part of that formula. I have asked for an accounting of what data went into that formula. So that we can see if we actually, you know. One, one person when I suggested this sort of implied, well, geez, you're getting 12 million dollars and you're not happy. No, I'm very happy. But what we'd like to do is just verify that 12 million is the correct number. And should it be more? I don't know. But we're going to, we've asked for the calculations. And that data is population, there's a, there's a formula regarding poverty rates. And overcrowding of units and, and so there is a pretty intense formula that you go through. It's in the act itself. But my question was what went into it? And on a positive side, it's, it's nice to know that we don't have the poverty of Newburgh, Kingston and Poughkeepsie. And some of the overcrowding that they may have, I don't know specifically about their communities. That's on the positive side, but I hate to think, not hate, I, I, almost hard to believe for me. That it's almost to the point of where we're, you know, almost 50% or maybe 40% to the good in regards to those statistics. So, when I get the numbers, we'll run them both, I've contacted both Senator Schumer. Speaking to their staff and Congressman Maloney's staff. And hopefully we'll be able to, to get some sound answers. But if it's 12 million, we'll certainly welcome the 12 million. The next issue is the, we're going to reopen City Hall to the public, starting April 1st. And we're, as you know, we've been, we've been closed for several months. To the public, we've been doing business at the door with people coming, paying their taxes. But this is an opportunity, we took this opportunity to look at City Hall operations also. And, and as we move forward, we're going to be looking at other ways and methods of payment, kiosk payment. But, but the key right now is to reopen the building, as you know, and the council members know and the public may not know. Is that we had many cases of COVID in the building, especially within the past month. So, also many of the people in the building are now getting their COVID vaccines. The ones who have not had COVID, and even those who had COVID previous and that are eligible for it now. So we feel it's time to reopen our buildings, so that we'll be doing so on April 1st. I think that's the beginning of Mr. Massey's birthday month. Appropriately, it begins on April 1st, which we also know is April Fool's Day, right? So, so we'll be opening the building then and our, our senior programs will still be on hold. We are not ready to bring those programs back into operation. Primarily because a lot of spring breakers don't want to wear their masks down in Florida and, and other parts of the country. So we need to keep those on hold for now. The Paramount Theater, although we have nothing booked at this time, well, we did have things booked, but we put them off. Towards the end of the year, we don't know if we're going to have them this year or not. But we will be starting movies soon, which is the good sign, because we have an 1,100-seat theater. The maximum for a movie, I think, is 50 people at this point. So we have the ability to do appropriate spacing in the theater. And we're also talking to the state about a, a testing facility. Which will do testing for people, for example, if you're going down an airplane. And you need a three-day test to have one located in the downtown area. And which will make it easier for people to, to move around also. So, the theater, although not, we won't be holding shows, we will be holding movies in the near future. And we'll have a testing facility in the downtown area. The Parks and Rec Building will be open to the public. You can do your pavilion rentals, the other activities renting, you know, of making arrangements for tennis. Because we'll be opening upper tennis courts this week. Our skate park, our skate park was reopened over the weekend. It's been very busy. Our reservoir trails are still open and will remain open. And the Parks Department will start doing their work on them for the, the spring cleanup of the trails. We get a lot of inquiries about swimming pools and what we will do this summer. We are planning on opening all three pools if we can get adequate staff for all three pools. So, we'll have some restrictions will be placed on it. There'll be no free swim because of the difficulty in controlling it. And also there'll be no lessons because of the hand-on contact that is required for swimming lessons. But we will be offering swimming at all three pools. Sports camp will be held a little bit differently this year. And couple, couple of reasons, one is the schools are under construction, so we're not able to do a big camp anyway. But we will be doing, Superintendent Brickhoff and her staff have put together a series of one-week camps. With small groups, it'd be the same group. One at Maple Hill, say one at Davage Park. And what they'll do is that'll give us the ability to control small groups of people. Small groups of 10 or 12 people. And God forbid there is a, you know, a breakout of COVID. Then we'll be able to isolate it within those groups. So, a person can't move from Group A to Group B on a, you know, on a daily basis. They'll be with the same group for the whole week. So, we're, they'll be offering that, and I believe, I believe they may have already started offering that as a summer camp option for parents. We also have, probably the most requested one is the basketball camps. And our basketball courts. And could you hit that slide? The basketball courts are the one thing that we're not going to be putting up yet. And the reason being, and, and some parents are very angry when they call, and some young people are very angry when they call. Is that the, we have no way to control it. We're, we try to focus on programs like instructional soccer. They're not competitive games, or something where we can have a controlled environment where we can enforce the regulations that we have with, you know, large groups of young people getting together. And I'm not comfortable at this point with putting up the basketball hoops yet. And as, we'll evaluate on a week-by-week basis, we'll look for more state guidelines, but I'm just not comfortable with doing it at this point. Our playgrounds will be open, have continued to be open. We did shut them down for a brief period of time, but under the CARES Act funding, we were able to purchase some very expensive steam equipment, you see the picture here. The playgrounds will continue to be sanitized on a daily basis. That is, you know, that's not a outright guarantee that nothing will be there. But you be assured that each morning, each piece of equipment in each of our playgrounds will be sanitized. We're hoping that the meal drop-off plan with the school district will continue, hasn't been confirmed yet. But that's my understanding, it probably will be continuing with the meal drop-off into the parks. So it makes sense for us to have some recreational opportunities there also. I mentioned pavilion rentals will be available at the Parks Department or through online. Clinics and instructional programs will take place. And I mentioned the basketball hoops, but we're trying to open it up to other sports and other sports activities. Where the instructional people can have control of the situation. Water system flushing, we're going to be doing, flushing the system again. I believe this letter either went out or, or we're doing a lot of social media push with it. It's two things, one, each neighborhood will be getting their lines flushed. The hydrants will be running. But what that does is it churns up the water and, and you'll get the, the brown water. It's safe to drink, but it is not safe to do white laundry. So, when, we'll have a schedule up. If you see that your, your neighborhood or your area is going to be, hydrants are going to be flushing. Then you need to please, don't plan on doing laundry for a couple of days, or at least white laundry for a couple of days. If you live in a, in an apartment complex. The city offers a service or some private development of flushing the hydrants on behalf of the, the association that owns it. Say like Sterling Park or Southgate, those are privately owned hydrants. So there's a letter that's also included in that mailing. But that's not directed towards, it mentions a fee of $50 per hydrant. That's not directed to homeowners, that's directed towards the apartment complexes or the private developments. We do plan on having some outdoor entertainment. As you know, we do the Thursday and Friday nights in downtown. And the Something Sweet Park or the Run For Downtown Park appears to be too small for us to use this year. Because of the social distancing requirements. So we're not 100%, 100% positive that we're not going to use it. But it's not looking like we would be able to use it, too few people would be able to get into the, into the area. We are looking to give an update in May on where we will be with the Festival Square activities. But as you know, the president is talking about July, you know, the 4th of July weekend as a target weekend for people being able to get back together. But again, it changes on a weekly basis. Just to, so you know that our numbers back in Middletown are, we're back to number one in the county on positivity. Which is not a good thing. And we don't know what they attribute that to, but we, we continue to do the enforcement. The mask mandate and the business enforcement. But we have had some, you know, people close to our hearts who passed away this past week. Lou Ogden, former chief of the City of Middletown Police Department. Who was chief here for eight or nine years, passed away from COVID. He was also a current city employee, working part-time in the commissioner, under the Commissioner of Public Works. And there's been others that I, I'm familiar with. Who also passed away within the past week or two from COVID. So COVID is not gone, it's still here. And it's, we mentioned earlier that we had several people within City Hall who came down with COVID. Some of them are seriously ill. And so the, the idea that this thing is behind us is, is not true. So we're going to be very cautious as we approach outdoor entertainment, as we approach basketball courts. And at the same time, we're going to use, you know, a measured approach to providing the other facilities. So we'll be looking for updates in May. We will have Farmer's Market that will be opening June 5th at the new location, right back here behind the Equilibria, Equilibria and Brewery 1. It's located, the official address is 1-31 Union Street. We're excited about the, the new location. Maria and her crew will be faced with a new challenge and hopefully an opportunity to expand the farm market. We'll have plenty of parking. And we'll be able to do the requirements under the state New York Forward Safety Guidelines for protecting the public that does attend. We were, they were familiar with it last year. And we're going to probably be doing, operating under the same guidelines. Single entry point and certain types of bagging requirements that the farmer has to abide by. Next is the warming station updates. I love every, every meeting night, we get a update from the, at least one person and a second ward who's not happy with our, what we're doing. But I guess we can't make everybody happy. I, I tried to tell at our last meeting, the people who live up in that neighborhood and the people who are impacted. That, that we did our best to meet the guidelines that we had put out. And we were very confident that we could meet those guidelines. And just because it needs to be repeating, because the lies keep getting repeated, so I'll have to repeat the process again. So on November 9th, we engaged the architect. The environmental inspection was done immediately on November 11th. The report was prepared on November 23rd. The HVAC and plumbing and electrical inspections were done November 23rd. The architect's submission was done on December 28th. We met with the architect to review plans and specs on January 5th. Legal notice was put in the paper on January 8th. The bid opening was January 28th. And the one bidder we had, and those things are behind schedule, the bidding is behind schedule because we had some difficulties. And with the property. But we did only get one bid, and that bid was for $885,775,000. And, yeah, 885,775. We went back out the bid and we received, we changed the process this time. Well, we brought a lot of the work and we had already started some of the work after we rejected that bid. We moved the, the project into the Community Development Office. We did the HVAC, plumbing and electrical under our city contract. And we added $50,000 from the coming council to the 250,000 that was part of our grant from the federal government. And we were able to get a bid from, a bid award to E&amp;A Contracting. An amount of $89,860 on the ceilings, flooring and doors. And that's the HVAC, if you look at the ceiling in the picture. You'll see the HVA system that's hanging down. Once the ceiling is permanently installed, the, then they'll just hook up the vents. But the new HVAC system, HVAC system is in place. And that was the delay, is this system was, was destroyed, it was gone. And had to be totally replaced and we could not start the plumbing and electrical until the HVAC system was in place. So, it's complete, the plumber is working, the electrical work is, is being done. And E&amp;A Contracting began construction work. The flooring is in the building, it's been delivered, we had a delay on that also. And they'll begin work tomorrow on St. Patrick's Day to do the floor installation. It's all been torn up, it's been, the demo work has been done. The patchwork and walls have been constructed that were required to be constructed, as you can see in the picture. Priming and painting is underway, the ceiling tiles are, we're waiting for them to come in. And the doors and windows are on order, waiting for delivery date. So, whether we meet the deadlines that, we did not meet the deadlines that we had set, but that's no fault of yours. That's, those are deadlines set by my office and unfortunately, due to circumstances, we were not able to meet them. But as you can see, and as the public can see, we are moving very quickly now on this. And it will be absolutely ready and the warming center will not be returning to Temple Sinai. And I think that's a relief to some of the neighbors. And does address the biggest concern is where is that facility going to end up being for the future years? So the, the offer still extends to any of the neighbors who, or anyone in the city who would like to take a tour of the facility. To make sure it's real, we're not making these pictures up, it does exist. Call my office and we've been more than happy to give you a, to give you a tour. The construction in Woolslayer Field is also restarting. As you can see in this picture, the snow, obviously delayed things, but the, the test holes are, were done. Jacob's waiting for the report. And we will be restoring, resuming construction as soon as Jacob reviews the report on the test borings that were are, I don't know if they're called borings or test holes, whatever, that are put in place for the track. The water line construction from Monhegan, from the water plant to Monhegan Avenue has also resumed. And construction around the city is, you'll be seeing a lot of sidewalk and street construction starting, resuming end of April. So, you'll see a lot of activity, there'll be more sidewalk replacement. In and around the downtown area and on some of the neighborhoods that are adjacent to the downtown, all grant-eligible. And we'll make sure we focus on the, the ADA compliance with the sidewalk program. One thing we are looking at in regards to sidewalks, because we do get a lot of requests. Is whether any of that 12 million dollars can be used in a sidewalk program for neighborhoods. Whether it would be an eligible item to do. So that might be, we, we have talked about a grant program with, rather than if neighbor, whole neighborhoods can't be done. Whether matching grants or whatever, so we're going to look at the eligibility of using that, some of that 12 million dollars into a sidewalk program. And of course, all these things will be presented to you. We also purchased the, I don't know if I get into that later, but let me go to the garbage thing first. The, starting April 12th, the new garbage cans will be distributed to each homeowner. And garbage will be required to be placed in these containers in order for pickup. Now, we know it's going to be an educational process, but it's going to be a requirement. Because the, eventually there will be only one person on the garbage truck, we have three on the truck now. And as you can see, the mechanical arm will be just reaching out, just like they do in a township or many cities across the United States. Picking up the can, dumping it and placing the can back. There'll be a whole bunch of rules that go with this. And we'll be passing those rules and educating the public. We'll be designating areas where you can place the cans and the different sizes of the cans. One issue during the public hearings was the size of the can. And Jacob was able to get some 35-gallon cans also, so it's almost like a, a large kitchen can. So, that'll be good for apartment houses, especially in downtown that have multiple-day pickup. So there's going to be three-sized cans, 35, 65 or 95. So, but keep your eyes open, your, the council should be adopting new legislation. We're going to give people an opportunity, obviously, to get used to it. The, how many cans a person can have. We're, we're looking at different rules and regs about, if you have an overflow, you can use your recycling can for regular garbage also. That's at the suggestion of the commissioner. And as long as you continue to recycle also. So, we'll, we'll have everything in place, but the cans will be coming in on the 12th. There will be a distribution process that you have to follow. The cans are all registered, there are numbers on there that, that are specific to specific addresses. And, but we'll be going through that with the public, starting in April 12th. And as you can see, the days of this will be very limited. You probably see this on holidays like Christmas and, and Mother's Day and things of that nature. But you won't be seeing it on a, on a regular basis where crews are out there picking up. Yes, Dr.?
I have a question, there's going to be a lot of garbage cans like that that people won't be using anymore. Do you have any, do you have any suggestions as to what we will do with those? Could they be brought to the recycling center in Monhegan or?
I would use them for leaves and shrubs, it depends on where you live, I guess, or what you do, but. You can leave them out for garbage pickup, you know, if you wanted to, but why get rid of it? It's perfectly good can.
Okay, just thought, I have like five, they don't be using anymore, so it's quite.
You can, you can rake your, your neighbor's yard too, if you want.
Thank you. Problem solved, thank you.
But the, I touched on the citywide sidewalk construction that's resuming. We're also, some of the sidewalks that you see torn up are Orange and Rockland, we're coordinating with them to get those sidewalks replaced also. And be less under the grant program. And lastly, the, it was already announced that SUNY Orange at the Diana Physical Education Center will be the site of a New York vaccine site. We're hoping that it will be announced this week, the county executive said it should be announced on Wednesday. The registration, I don't know, we haven't heard officially from the state when they're going to start accepting. But this has a pretty long covidvaccine.health.ny.gov. The short one is go to NY.gov and look for, go to COVID. Look for Middletown on the, on the eligibility list and where vaccines will be available. My understanding at this time, it's going to go on for several months here at this location. So it's not a one-time and out deal, not a one-week and out deal, that it's going to be extended. That's what we're being told at this time. And we will have Middletown police officers in the area helping with traffic control, because this is a large site. And there will be people coming from all over. So, just like some of us, you know, my wife went to White Plains for her shot. You know, people can't get on a list in Westchester, will be coming up here for their shots. So it's, these are New York State designated sites. There are no zip code regulations on it, but there are questions you have to do when you make your appointment. One recommendation when you go online is have your insurance card ready, because they do ask for your insurance card. There's no charge, but they do want your insurance information if you have insurance. If you don't have insurance, obviously, you just answer no and you can move on to the next question. So, look, we look forward to it, once we get official confirmation of when the website will be opened. And the, the vaccine site will be open, we'll be sharing it with the public immediately. So there'll be no, you know, everyone gets notified at once. So there's no quote insider trading on these things. So, that's all I have, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you, I had a couple of people ask me about updates on both the bus station and the Heritage Trail, I don't know if you have anything new.
Our last meeting was canceled. The county Parks, Jim Brooks had a conflict at the last minute. So, we're still in the, the new commissioner, our Parks Planning, Planning Commissioner. He has come up with another concept for when we come into the Coach Terminal to come out two ways. So they're doing a redesign and it's much more acceptable to me. I'm sure it'll be, the original design is there. And there's an additional branch coming off, so he's going to cover more of downtown with the bike trail. And also some amenities at the Coach USA Terminal. And there's some legal stuff that Coach and the county are working out, some legal language on the property. And we're also a party to that contract, so it's moving. The trail should be to East Main Street soon. Jacob, when did we, when do they expect us to get it out? Do you remember the forbid, did they say?
Shortline?
Yeah.
Shortline is still under, under design.
Under designer.
We're working out the legal agreement.
Yeah, the final thing is the legal agreements with Coach USA and Shortline on the on the transfer of properties. That hasn't occurred yet, so. But we, we do have meetings scheduled for like every two weeks. So as soon as we have our next update, I'll give it to you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, wait a minute. I did do bulk pickup? Did I miss it? Oh, I can't see it, it's so small. Bulk pickup. It's on the screen. I can't read it, but it's there. And looks like it starts third ward, April 12th, set out on Sunday, second ward, April 19th, first ward, April 26th, and fourth ward, April, April 3rd. And, or May 3rd, I'm sorry. So as you know, we don't go, we rotate. So next year, the fourth ward will be first, and we rotate for a reason. So make it fair to everyone to have a little extra time. It will be posted on all of our social media. All of your aldermen will have that information. If you'd like to send an email request, we'll send you the email with all the limitations, but they will be posted on Channel 20 and on all social media. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, remarks of department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. Just update you, today we had an IDA meeting and a CDA meeting. These are our public authority agencies that we, we run. We did the audits, the annual reports, and the, the public authority report. Both boards had a presentation by our auditors, and we're advancing everything to the state that's due March 31st. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Commissioner DPW?
Good evening, all. I'm going to start off with the Alderman Massey report for the reservoir water level. Since we have not had any really significant rain or any kind of rain for over a couple of weeks, as you hear in the news, it's almost, it's very, very dry, and, and there's concern of fire, brush fire, and so on. Fortunately, our reservoirs right now for Alderman Massey again is 99% full. So we, you know, we're in good shape. And we're expecting quite a bit of rain Thursday night into Friday. But keep an eye, keep your eyes open for any brush fire because things are very dry. And, and that really, you know, makes us think more about our watershed and our reservoirs and how important water is. And the mayor, it was on his PowerPoint, but he chose not to cover it. Yesterday, we did another purchase for another about 40, about 47 acres in Mount Hope, which is basically where the Shawangang Kill runs through that property. That property was targeted for about 42 single home subdivision, which will require building septic system and wells and so on and so forth. So with this purchase, with the help of Governor Cuomo and the DEC, with the $3 million grant, we were able to purchase this property. It will forever remain green for the city of Middletown watershed protection for, for generations to come. And it's, we, the purchase price was $500,000. And there's going to be a press conference, or press release, rather, between the mayor, the governor, and the DEC regarding the two properties that were purchased, which is the horse farm and this property adjacent to it. And all of them, they are upstream of our Kench Reservoir. And Kench Reservoir is the major supply of water for the city of Middletown water system. And with that, also, the mayor, he was going to talk about the traffic operations. We did the final submit, that's the $21 million project. Most of it is grant funding from the state. And the plans were submitted, final plans were submitted again for the DOT, for final review. We're hoping to be able to go out for bid in April, near April this year. So that's about $21 million worth of work, over and above what the $12 million we're getting the mayor was talking about. And, and the curbs and sidewalks, he also spoke about them. Hopefully, they will start in, in April. The project will get restarted in April. And with that, I will, water storage tank projects, about $5.5 million also is being designed. It was submitted to Department of Health. We got some, we got some review, some comments yesterday. We will be addressing them and responding back to Department of Health. Again, that's $5.5 million. $2.6 million is a grant from the state. The remainder of it is funded by, through low-interest loan from City Revolving Fund. And that's, that should do it. If you have any questions for me?
Any question? Alderman Kleiner?
Commissioner, do you know, I know it's O N R, but do you have any idea how long O N R is going to be on Monhegan Avenue? Because they really do keep tearing that up. They seem to be on the other side now. Is that, is there a lot left to go on that?
Yeah, honestly, I don't know. Orange and Rockland, to be honest with you, we asked them to do this work, especially within, at the intersections, within 250 feet minimum of each intersection. Reason behind it is because of that traffic operation project, the $21 million project. Because we're going to be ripping out all these signalized intersections. So you see Orange and Rockland, and they did accommodate us, and I do thank them, really, I sincerely thank them, Orange and Rockland, for doing this work and accommodating us. They're jumping all over the place to hit all these signalized intersections, update all their gas mains and electric underground or anything like that, so that when we come and do our project, they're not going to come back the following year and tear it up because of gas leak, or they have to change it from gas iron main to plastic main to comply with the code. So it's all organized, and we've been working with them for a couple of years to try to get this thing done. But I don't know the extent, how far they're going to go with, with Monhegan Avenue, but I'll be happy to find out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob?
Thank you.
Okay, public hearings and grievances.
We have one public hearing. Notice hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. Honor is near 8:00 p.m. as possible. Common Council Chambers, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed revision or revising to Chapter 475 zoning. B and is hereby amended by adding paragraph 29 to subsection B of section 475.23, Light Industrial District. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will get, will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed revising of the zoning code. The complete proposed revising of the zoning code is available in the Office of the Common Council Clerk, City Hall, 16 James Street, Room 12, and on the city website. The public hearing shall be conducted via video teleconference and live on Channel 20 for viewing. In order to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the city residents, the council will not have the public at this meeting, public hearing, but will be televised live on Channel 20. Members of the public may also access meeting to give comments by clicking on the link below and register for the meeting. Please take further notice that the public hearing is being held in accordance with the New York State Public Officers Law and Executive Order 202.1 issued on March 12, 2020 by New York State Governor Andrew Cuomo, which suspended Article 7 of the Public Officers Law to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in public, in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meeting to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding and that such meetings are recorded and late transcribed. For any person unable to participate at the public, at the time of the public hearing, emails, comments may be submitted in advance to John Numcheck. According to, no in-person attendance is permitted for the meeting. Public comment shall be permitted and shall, and all persons participating shall be entitled to be heard. Please note that all meetings will be recorded by the order of the Common Council, John C. Numcheck, Clerk of the Common Council, published March 4th and March 5th, and also on the city website.
This time, the public hearing is open. We have no one from the public, any members from the council. Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. As Legislative Chair, I just wanted to comment that a lot of these public hearings come through my committee. I've tried in the past not to have the resolution the same night as the public hearing for some modicum of transparency. Most of these decisions are not really challenged by the community. We don't have a lot of input. Tonight is an exception. I was asked by the administration to move this forward. We have an applicant waiting for this, so we're trying to expedite that matter. So that's why it's on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Burr. Alderman John Francois?
Yes, good evening. I was kind of glad Mayor to touch up on vaccine, covid vaccine situation. Going around, talking to a few friends and family members, there's, there's folks out there that's eligible to take the vaccine, but they choose not to. For some reason, I don't know why. I mean, I can understand people who septic go back in the past, where that occur. But we, we have to realize, we have access to a lot of information nowadays. So the faster we could move on with the vaccine, and the faster we get out of this mess that we're in right now. So I would encourage anyone, if you're eligible to take the vaccine, please go and do so. Thank you. That's all I have.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I agree with that. It can save your life. Why you wouldn't do it is just beyond me. As far as the $12 million, that's great news, and all I can say is thank you, Georgia. Because that's why we have it. April 12th, we're getting the garbage cans. I see also on, on the city's school website that I think it's basically full in-person school learning is going to resume on April 12th. So that's a good thing to keep in mind, traffic-wise and otherwise. And I also want to thank the people at the warming station. They've managed to do tests of everybody there. They've managed to get almost everybody vaccinated. Anyone who wants it's been able to get vaccinated. They've been doing an unbelievable job, so I thank them so much. And, and lastly, I just wanted to mention, Barbara and I were at Hannaford's, and we were checking out, and we got to the checkout, and the woman says, well, I'm going to deduct $25 from your order, because the woman in front of us had bought us a $25 gift card. I have no idea who she was. She had a child with her. But I, it was, I guess, a random act of kindness, and so I have no idea. But, but I, I really do thank her. It just was an amazing moment. Thank you.
Alderman Cassoon?
Good evening. I don't really have anything this evening. I just wanted to take a moment to extend my deepest sympathies to the Ogden family tonight. The service that the city held outside of PD and City Hall to say goodbye was a touching tribute to a really great man. And in the absence of being able to personally pay our respects to that family, I think it was done beautifully. And my thanks go to the police department and everyone who was involved in getting that done. And again, my, my thoughts are with that family right now. Thank you.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. Yeah, I would concur with Alderwoman Ram Cassoon. I don't think I was on the council, obviously, when he was chief, but I interacted with him over the years, and he was a guy that always had a smile and a kind word, and it was always much appreciated. Thank you.
Alderman Green?
Thank you very much. Yeah, Kate, you took the words, sorry, Alderwoman Ram Cassoon, you took the words right out of my mouth. You know, it was an amazing tribute and, you know, certainly a beautiful, a beautiful day to honor someone so important to our city. Just, you know, everyone, the, the vaccines are coming, and we know we're getting the big location here, but, you know, at the same time, still got to be masked up. It's still a pandemic, still a very big issue, making many people very sick. You know, so we just hope that everyone still thinks of their neighbor, if not for themselves, and, and keeps distant, keeps safe, and that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
Happy to hear about the garbage cans, especially after last week, it was like the Wizard of Oz in my neighborhood. My cans went right down the street, and no, just no one seems to have a lids anymore, so I'm glad that these lids will be attached, and hopefully that will help with some of the flying garbage. Also, walking around the city, the plastic bag ban, whether they like it or dislike it, you know, I don't, I haven't seen plastic bags hanging in trees or in bushes, so I think that's a good thing. And I saw something in the news that, it's in the state senate. They're thinking about, I know in Europe they do this, taxing the companies for their products as far as recycling. If they'll get, you know, if they make something that's very easy to recycle, they pay less of a tax. If they make a product that is hard to recycle or not recyclable, they get taxed. Because as it is now, the, you know, we, the consumer, pay for the product, and then through your taxes, we pay to get rid of the recycling, or to recycle it. So we're paying twice. And so I hope this, I hope this moves through the legislature. I think that's a good idea. You know, if the company doesn't make a product that's very recyclable, then they should have to pay the brunt of the cost, not the taxpayers. And happy St. Patrick's Day.
Alderman Massey?
Nothing this evening.
New business?
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey. Resolution to authorize the Treasury to transfer $1,000 within the Police Department 2021 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin. Resolution to authorize the Treasury to transfer $45,971 within the Police Department 2021 budget to cover the cost of the negative balance in the account from officers out of work on 207C.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Jean Francois. Resolution to authorize, to approve the 2021 spring cleanup week.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Green. Resolution to authorize the Treasury to transfer $584.68 within the 2020 DPW budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Alderman Kleiner?
I just want to say, you know, spring is coming. We are transferring this money from snow and ice. Thank you.
Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Burr?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson. Resolution to hereby authorize the mayor to submit an application to the County of Orange for solutions funding and following approval to sign any and all necessary contracts on behalf of the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.[1728.22]
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr. Resolution to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Dan Higbee, the Recreation Commission term expiring in 2026.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Casoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner. Resolution to concur with the mayor's reappointment of Roland Leibert to the Recreation Commission term expiring in 2025.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Alderman Kleiner.
I just want to thank Dan Higbee and Roland Leibert for being willing to serve under Recreation Commission. It wouldn't seem right without Roland Leibert. Thank you.
Roll.
Ram Casoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie. Resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the county to operate to stop DWI for the period of March 2nd, 2021, through January 1st, 2022. The terms and conditions are the same as the prior agreement.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, seconded by Alderman-Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Casoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie. Resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the county to operate to stop DWI for the period of March 2nd, 2021, through January 1st, 2022. The terms and conditions are the same as the prior agreement.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, seconded by Alderman-Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Ram Casoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. That's it. New business.
Audit.
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be ordered, the claims to be adjusted, and the city treasurer to be authorized to issue warrants for the payment.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman-Massie, seconded by Alderman-Green. Roll.
Ram Casoun.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye. Move for adjournment? So moved.[1796.53]